I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting, Monday, August 5th, 2024, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chamber. On the agenda, first, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Absent. We have a quorum. Moving on to agenda item number three, considering accept Town Council meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024. There are motion?
Sub move.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of those meetings? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to subcommittees. A, Department of Public Works.
We had a meeting on July 29th, and we have a couple items on the agenda that was all voted favorably to the council.
Thank you. Moving on to Education and Services. Counsel, Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did not have a meeting, and we have no meeting scheduled at this time.
Moving on to General Government. Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did not have a meeting since before our last Town Council meeting, so I believe we're going to have one at some point in the next week or two.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Development. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, otherwise I'm all set. Thank you.
Moving on to Protections to Property. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. We have a meeting on the 29th, and we have a few items to all those forward in favor to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Chairman's Announcement. I have no Chairman's announcements right now, but I just, I said as Chairman of the Animal Control Center, the new building that's going to be built, and I just want the townspeople to know that we had an onsite visit after we had a regular meeting of the architect, the engineer, the town manager, DPW, the animal control officer, myself, to retrofit our new blueprints that are going to be printed. We are no longer going to retrofit to an older building in the rec area. We have now moved our facility to the Department of Public Works, the backside of the lot. The piece of land that's there is outstanding, it's flat, it's cost-effective, water, sewer, and gas are in reach, so I think we're going to be moving forward, we're going into design stage. I thank you very much. Any questions, feel free to give me a call, we'll talk about it if there's some ideas, but it's full steam ahead, it's been on the back burner for a little while, it's nice to see it come to the forefront. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. This is Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Just a few items this evening, just as a follow-up to the last meeting with Counsel Marquetti, inquired about some issues on Central Street. The item that was the couch was removed, Maritzis took care of that, immediately notified the owner, and that was removed. We are reviewing the two dumpsters in that parking lot area. The issue, what we're finding out, is the fact that there was no planning when that Central Street development plaza was developed for the two properties, 1 to 11th Central Street and also the burned-out building. Evidently, there was an area previously, from what I've had conversations with the two owners of those properties, so I'm looking to locate the plans and the minutes and all the dialogue for that piece of property, and that's the issue. Those two dumpsters are being used for the Honest Town Eats and 1 to 11th Central Street, so we will have to kind of look at those plans and see what we can do to accommodate those owners, because there were some concessions from one of the owners stated that, to their belief, that that sidewalk plaza was given as a concession, and there's no ability for them to put a dumpster actually on their property because of the way the sidewalk. So I will continue to work on that, Counselor, on that. And the second item relative to the Elm Street building located next door on Opera for all the councilors, we have been in contact with the owner, Matt Higgins, he has informed me that they will be, out of the money that was loaned to them, they will be doing roof repairs, not the elevator immediately, they want to close up the envelope of the building. I looked, I did look through their proposal originally, they did check off that they were going to either do an elevator or a sprinkler head, new roof, or new HVAC, so it was part of their original application, and part of that packet they did submit when they asked for the loan, they did have quotes for the roof as well, so he stated that they will be starting those repairs in the next couple weeks, and that they will be blocking off parts of the parking lot. So I did follow up on that. So if there's any other questions, you can follow up with me later on regarding that. Reminded that the Southbridge Housing Needs Survey is up on the website, that is open until August 31st. We welcome individuals to share housing experiences and ideas in the town, especially in the light of all these properties being bought up by these new landlords, multiple million-dollar properties, groups of properties, so it's important to get those ideas out there. Police Chief has asked me to remind everybody that tomorrow night is National Night Out, and all the councils that wish to attend will be held tomorrow evening from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Hopefully, the rain will hold off on the town common. They will have free pizza, ice cream, music, different community groups and staff from the police and fire departments and the cops and kids program. The police department will be having child ID kits, toys for the police department, and other activities, so we welcome everybody to come out to National Night Out for Police. It's always a good evening. And finally, just the last thing, we did have a meeting last week with, in regards to the Town Hall Mass Preservation Grant that we have, we did a tour of this building with Rich, a member of the Massachusetts Historic Preservation Group, PEG, and we did a tour of the building. As part of that, Rich then did a further walkthrough of the building and reviewed some of the mechanicals in the building, I just want to make councilors aware of the fact and the public that we found a water main inside the building that is in extremely poor condition, and I would send photographs if you would like, but we will have to put a new water line into the building. We applied for an emergency D-CAM waiver, we are coordinating those repairs, just to let the public know and the Town Council know that those repairs will be going on pretty shortly. Rich is trying to have minimal impact to operations here in the building and our ability to keep offices closed, but it may become necessary that we may have to do an emergency closure, but we'll let everybody know and the public know, but he's doing his best. The water company will be assisting us as well, and that's a total replacement all the way to the water main in the street. Estimated repairs are approximately 25,000 plus, we will be able to cover that in our property demo account. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Let the record show that Counselor Rivas has arrived. Thank you. Moving on to Presentations, we have no Presentations tonight. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Town Council on any issues that are not on the agenda?
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I don't think this is on your agenda, but I honestly didn't look, so tell me if it is. But it's about the hunting. But first of all, congratulations to our Town Manager on his one-year anniversary for being here.
Pretty close. Couple weeks.
Okay, well, approximate, and congrats to our Chair and Vice Chair for being nominated and elected. So, but, yeah, so next, I want to make you all aware of the upcoming hunting and trapping season. Even if you don't hunt or trap, you need to be respectful and cognizant of those who do, so you can forage, hike, and enjoy the wetlands. There is something for almost everyone in hunting season. The youth deer hunt kicks off the season on September 28th, and archery, shotgun, and primitive firearms follow, allowing a weekend for the paraplegic hunt on October 31st to November 2nd. Trapping for fur bearers like beaver, bobcat, coyote, muskrat, skunk, fisher, et cetera, starts on November 1st and ends within one month or five months. Check the dates for your specific thing. Hunting, fishing, and trapping has associated licenses, permits, and stamps. The money from these purchases goes to the Inland Fish and Game Fund, which supports the education and outdoor skills such as archery in the schools, Project Wild and Project Wild Aquatic, and Envirothon. If art is your thing, K through 12 kids can enter a painting or drawing of a duck for the annual duck stamp. Entries can be seen locally in Wales, Mass. at Norcross Wildlife Sanctuary in early 2025. To participate in the Share the Harvest program, contributing a deer to combat food insecurity in the state, go to mass.gov/sharetheharvest, or mass.gov/sharetheharvest. Massachusetts Fish and Wildlife is trying to prevent the spread of chronic wasting disease known by the initials CWD. To do your part, look for CWD-free labels on lures and don't transport kill across state lines. It takes 18 months for the symptoms to become evident in a deer, so a symptomless deer killed in Vermont, say, for example, may have the prions of CWD and can infect a herd if brought to Massachusetts. For all the hunting, trapping, and fishing dates and information, pick up a paper guide like this one, or go to mass.gov/...I'm not sure if it's something like hunting and fishing, Department of Fish and Wildlife. If you need to report a violation or ask a question, call the Massachusetts Environmental Police at 1-800-632-8075, or 617-626-1665, or go to mass.gov/ole. And wear your blaze orange in the woods beginning September 28th. And lastly, the Conservation Commission Board, which was near the Town Clerk's office with the Trails Committee Board, was removed several years ago, and I would love a physical place to post important information like this hunting and fishing information, as well as seasonal vernal pool and wetlands info. Please let me know where this is possible, or tell Katie Yoder, who is our new agent, or come to our next Conservation Commission meeting on August 8th at 5:30 in the McCann Room downstairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the council to speak on the issues not on the agenda? If not, I'd like to just take a moment. There was a gentleman that passed on, was a former Southbridge high grad, a father, a friend, a former firefighter for a good many years, his family's been in Southbridge forever, and the gentleman's name is Bonnie Hefta, and I'd just like to call for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, vote to allow the Town Manager to sign disclosure of John A. LaFlesch as a special municipal employee for finance interest in a municipal contract as required by MGL Chapter 6, excuse me, 268A, Section 20B. Sub move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. This came up through Matty Bonadillas, the Town Clerk. As everyone knows, Mr. LaFlesch serves as a poll worker for the elections. He just recently, he was retired Superintendent of Schools for Bay Path Regional Vocational Schools. He has since taken on the role as the interim business manager, as such for him to continue as a poll worker, because he does enjoy the work with our citizens. He just needs to have us sign this disclosure of financial interest, just so it's legal with the ethics board.
Are there any questions? Mr. Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. I don't really understand what this is all about, why we have to file a disclosure. He works for Bay Path.
Because he's a paid employee contracted with Bay Path, because he's under a contract as an employee there, just, it's a financial disclosure, because he's getting paid by a, he's getting, because he's technically, even though he's an employee of Bay Path, we are part of the regional school district, so in fact, he's an employee of Southbridge as well, so it'll be two different pays.
But how does that make him a special employee?
He's not a special employee, it's just a disclosure of a municipal. He's just filing a disclosure, well, he's a special municipal employee because he'd be working for the same town in two different capacities, and whatever you work for, you can't do that according to the law, so you have to have special municipal employee status.
He works for other communities as well, not just Southbridge?
Correct, but he works for Bay Path, yes, so he'd have to do that for his other communities as well. Fantastic.
Okay.
He wants to do everything right, so.
Any other discussion? Just one question, Mr. Town Manager, did Dean Yakabuchi check off on this gentleman?
He certainly did. With flying colors.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Mitchell Robbins of Millbury, Mass. as a full-time firefighter for the town of Southbridge effective immediately, based upon the Fire Chief's recommendation, pending successful completion of all medical, physical testing, including passing state physical assessment tests, background checks, and state ethics training.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair through you. Thank you through you, Chair. This was the meeting 29, Agenda 10, 11, 14, 15, 16, and 17, all in favor, what's forward to the Town Council. Thank you.
Subcommittee's favorable, any further discussion? If not, Chief?
Thank you very much. Obviously, we're all aware that we did lose a firefighter again to another town, that was proposed on July 13th. We went through our list that we had previously from last spring and made some phone calls from those members that were still on our list. Mitchell was one of them. We did interview three of the other candidates that were on there again, just between the deputy and myself, just to talk to them, see what they've been doing, what activities they've been doing, any more certifications. We did make a recommendation between the deputy and myself to move forward, to have the Town Manager take a look at them again, which Mitchell did go see the Town Manager at the last process, and he felt comfortable, Town Manager felt comfortable with moving him to the next spot. So Mitchell is here tonight with his family. Obviously, I just want to make comment, to see the policeman and the fireman coming into this room, they all shake hands, they all respect each other, and that's what we really like here in town, that's what we do, we take care of all of you guys, so I just had to say that, and the Paul Heffner thing, so thank you for bringing that up. So Mitchell here is, he does live in Millbury currently, which is in our collective bargaining 15-mile radius. He currently works full-time for the town of Millville Fire Department. On his off time, he still is a full call member, a call department member for the Millbury Fire Department where he lives. He is, he currently has his Mass EMT certification and has obtained his firefighter 1-2 through the Mass Hall Vault Fire Academy. He will at some point in the next year during his probation go to the full-time academy. We've worked on his professional and personal references, and everybody speaks very highly of him, although we didn't check with his wife, I'm not sure about that. But moving forward, obviously, he's in good standing, Corey has been completed, I would highly recommend Mitchell for our next full-time employment to the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Is there going to be any problem with him being as a call firefighter in Millbury? Is that going to be any conflict with his job here?
As of this time, we don't, there's nothing in the collective bargaining agreement and/or the fire department's policies, that we do have other members that are on other departments as a call status, so as I see it right now, no.
So, I mean, but if he gets called to a fire in Millbury, then what happens? He can't, he won't be able to come here, or?
That's correct. If he's involved in fire suppression in Millbury, yes, or even if he's got a family event, it's kind of the same thing. We make it available for our employees to come back to Southbridge when there is a fire, and that's how that works.
And vice versa? If he's here, working, and there's a fire or something, and they call him in Millbury, there won't be any problem going back and?
Through the chair, no, there will not.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep, yep. I do, and I see on both sides of it, if he's employed and is he working his shift here in Millbury, he can't leave here and go to Millbury, unless it's like a 19 alarm fire, to be honest with you, because we don't go to Millbury, it'll be a very large fire. And if he's home, he has every obligation to him and his family to be available, also to his little call at the fire department, so he can come and go through there, there's no obligations other than doing training and things like that, so, did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Congratulations.
I don't know if you have a speech.
Excuse me, number 11. Number 11, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Jonathan Delgado as a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Southbridge effective immediately, based on the Police Chief's recommendation, pending successful completion of all medical, physical testing as required by the Human Resources, Civil Service, and State Ethics in good standing.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Shenier, seconded by Ortiz. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Chief Woodson apologizes for not being able to be here this evening, he does send his regrets, he did send able-bodied Lieutenant Salisbury in to stand in if anybody had any questions. Jonathan did appear before the PPP Subcommittee meeting, I let the lieutenant give his background, but this is a, we are authorized for 40 police officers in the police department, we have a, as the chief has articulated multiple times, we have a number of police officers that are either deployed outside the country, we have one that's been on long-term medical, possibly to, and others with different variety of stages where we're not fully, have an active 40 officers working. This would continue to strengthen, authorize at 40, we have the money in the budget for this. This officer, as the lieutenant will articulate, is already trained, would be a welcome addition, and I'll let the lieutenant go through any details of this individual.
Good evening, Mr. Manager, Town Council, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Delgado, here to my left tonight, is a fully-trained police officer, he's been through the West Boylston Police Academy in 2021, he did serve with the town of Millbury for about a year, he's an active duty, excuse me, active-duty military member of the Marine Corps for nine years, still currently serving. He has a bachelor's degree in CJ, he's also bilingual and speaks fluent Spanish, which will bring us up to about 14, 15 officers in the department speaking fluent Spanish in our community, is a great valuable resource to have. As Mr. Manager said, he is fully trained, so with your approval tonight, we put him through field training for a couple weeks, and he's on the road up and running as opposed to sending someone to a 21-week academy, which obviously takes quite a bit of time and costs the town quite a bit of money.
Any questions? If you have no questions, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Congratulations.
Before we go further, for those people that are listening, the chief has sent me a message stating that they may postpone National Night Out, he wanted to try to get me before I announced it, but I had already announced it, so they may postpone it, but we'll let it go out on social media because of the weather forecast that's scheduled for tomorrow, but we'll make sure that those messages go out, but he just wanted to say that there is a potential that it may be canceled for tomorrow evening, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, vote to approve the appointment of William Cody as a citizen member of the Department of Public Works Subcommittee, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025, pending completion of State Ethics.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, this was approved by the Subcommittee unanimously by those present.
Been recommended unanimously by Subcommittee? Any further discussion? Not all of the favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13, vote to approve the reappointment of Steve Lazo as citizen member of the Department of Public Works Subcommittee, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025, State Ethics in good standing.
Sub move.
Second.
A motion, a second. Counsel Shenier.
This was unanimously approved by all members that were present at the Subcommittee meeting.
Any further discussion? Not all of the favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14, vote to approve the appointment of Dave Adams as citizen member to the Protections and Protections of Property Subcommittee, effectively immediately through June 30th, 2025, State Ethics in good standing.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Ortiz. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. I just want to say thank you for Mr. Adams for coming forward again and put more time in the town of Southbridge. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Would Mr. Adams like to address the council? Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I did watch it on YouTube video, and I just, as a point of clarification, I just wanted to know why Counsel Shenier was not allowed to vote at the Subcommittee meeting.
Why he didn't vote was because Counsel Kelly found in the rules and regulations that it has to be the Vice Chairman or the Chairman, which is ex officio to all Subcommittee's, which we've been doing it in a manner without knowing that you just, we were there, we should have, I should have taken the chair, or Mike should have taken the chair.
Oh, no, I think you're reading that wrong. Ex officio members, Vice Chairman and the Chairman are there if there's no quorum of the members of the Subcommittee at the meeting, only then can they step in and vote, but if all the members of the committee are there, and he's an appointed member, and he's also an elected Town Counselor, then they are allowed to vote.
He's not a member of that committee.
You're not, oh, you're not a member of the committee?
No, that was the point of where the question came in, and I thank Counsel Kelly for the clarification, and then he showed us in writing what happened, and I go, oh, because I, the meeting prior, I said, Mike, why don't you go fill in for the quorum, but he happened to be the Vice Chairman. In the second meeting, I told Counsel Shenier if you'd like to sit in, I would sit back, and he said, okay, I'll do it, and then we found out, so we have to kind of redo what we're doing.
Okay, I was not aware he wasn't a member, I asked him earlier about it, and he didn't know, but I do think that the Subcommittee member, the Subcommittee Chairman can appoint any Counselor he wants. You're not reading it that way? No.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you to the council. I don't know the exact section that Counsel Kelly pointed out, but in the first big section, it says that only the Chairman and the Vice Chairman are ex officio members, and that they are the only ones with voting power if there's no quorum. Then if you go down to like the fifth section or the fifth page, it will restate that if the Chairman and the Vice Chairman are not present at the Subcommittee meeting, then there could be one appointed by the Chairman, in this case, would have been Chairman Dow of the PPP Subcommittee, he could have then appointed Counsel Shenier, but since the Chairman and I were present, according to the rules and regulations, they can't do that, and I was forced to sit in based on the rules and regulations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Shenier.
Yeah, I did have a discussion with Counsel Marquetti, and I did neglect to tell him that I wasn't on it, and I apologize for that.
Any other discussion? I'd like to thank Counsel Kelly for a point of clarification at that time. It seems no matter how long you've been on the council or involved, there's always something that somebody paints with a fine brush, and they find it, and then he brings it forward, and I thank you for that. It happens sometimes with councils looking on certain issues. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Yes, well, I just happen to be the new guy, so I actually read the regulations recently. And that's the only reason I was able to, I picked it up. But my understanding of the regulations is that the ex officio members are members of all committees. If there is not a quorum, then the ex officio members, if, if they are present, they sit in. If they are not present, then the chairman of the committee can pick, can appoint another town councilor to sit in that role. And they can vote, by the way, in that role. So, but, but given that the ex officio members, both ex officio members were present, the ex officio members should have sat. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Congratulations, Mr. Adams. All right, round of applause for Mr. Adams.
There we go.
He can't quit. He's still involved.
I would have rather have a speech of some sort, because I've always enjoyed his words of wisdom.
I did too, but he's now shy. Moving on to, moving on to agenda item number 15. Vote to appoint Arrola Lauschel as a citizen member to the Protections and Persons and Property Subcommittee, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Counselor Dow, the recommendation of Subcommittee?
All in favor to the council?
Unanimous at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? Not all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to approve applying for the 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $5,100 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Discussion? Chief?
Thank you, everybody. This is an annual emergency management performance grant. We've done this for several, several years, since I've been the chief and previous to that, for many years before that. The, this, this grant is, is reduced this year, just like most grant programs throughout the state and the federal government. There was a 9% cut in this, so we used to receive $5,900. This year, we have, what we're going to be applying for is $5,100. This, this grant also is a matching grant. What I mean by matching grant, we have to do something within the town and pay for something from our own budget to allow us to be a part of the grant. We, we use the Everbridge Reverse 901 software package that we pay for every year. That is, so that is the match. So we've already expended those funds through the, through the town's government, and now that, so it makes us available for the grant. This year, and like the previous two years, we've been trying to buy a small amount of emergency operations equipment, emergency operations center equipment, excuse me. The new fire station, when it does open up its doors, will, the EOC will be over there. The first two times on this grant, we've got tables, several very nice tables, that will be nice in our training room, in our, in our EOC. So this year is the first year, we're going to purchase the matching chairs that go with it. By doing this, we're taking a little bit of funds away from, or excuse me, adding more funds for furniture and infrastructure within the fire station project. A little creative, thinking a few years back to use a grant to do something like this. So I highly approve this. I'd like you to approve this and move forward in getting this all taken care of.
Any questions? If not, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Seventeen. Vote to accept the municipal local cybersecurity program grant in the amount of $89,162.40 to strengthen cybersecurity and reduce future cyber risk for the police and fire departments and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. That was approved, all in favor to move to the town council.
Unanimous at Subcommittee level. Any further discussion? Go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
I just had a quick question. I did watch the, the video on this. And just the comments from the chief about previous, you know, hacks that had happened. Have all those issues been resolved with, with this? Will they be resolved with this new security?
We hope so. We don't know. You know, the future, we don't know what the future looks like in cyber world, we'll say. It will definitely move us much more forward than what we are now and what we need to be. Essentially, what this grant will help us do is, everyone's familiar with the cloud. We will essentially be taking our server, our IT infrastructure, and placing it in a cloud format database that'll be protected. This also comes with a 24/7 IT kind of backup. There's some guarantees that come along with the contract as well if we were to ever be compromised. We were actually recently, as most of you know, back in 2022, we were hacked, severely hacked, and we did pay to surrender our data back at that time. Recently, as June of this year, it was attempted again. Thankfully, the firewall we had put in place after the last attack prevented it from happening. But who's to say what the future's going to look like? I, I actually just recently completed my master's in this field, and it's crazy to think what's going on out there. So we definitely have to move forward in trying to protect, you know, our residents' personal info as much as we can.
Through the chair, was there anyone ever charged or arrested based on that?
No, I'm sure, as you know, these are done by ghost groups, Russian spyware hacker groups. So there was some investigation put into place, but there wasn't really anything significant as far as who the suspects were in this. It's really hard to track these. They're super, super hard. They're done by sophisticated methods and usually not anywhere within the United States being, being hacked.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm just curious as to what, what type of training are people are getting with regard to identifying potential cyber attacks? I know from my own experience that a lot of these are coming through email with, kind of, they look like real emails from, say, you know, you to a subordinate. And then, you know, it turns out that you click on whatever, whatever link there is in there, and then all of a sudden, somebody has access to all your systems. Are we doing any regular personnel training with regard to identifying these kind of attacks?
We are, and I'm glad you asked that question. What we're referring to is called a phishing scam. And our IT gentleman, Mr. Rule, is very familiar with those. The, every Southbridge town employee has to take cybersecurity training. It's consistently, it's every couple of months, we receive emails. I'm sure some of you have seen through your town emails recently, we've had some attempts at that. And then Mr. Rule quickly catches it, if I'm pronouncing his name wrong, I apologize, quickly catches it, sends us out a corrective email saying that, you know, this was an attempt at a phishing scam, and don't click into it. In regards to our citizens and residents, that is something that hopefully this grant will help us push out more with some educational. I actually had Trade Winds reach out recently. They've had some scams. So we're sending a detective over there to do some training with them as well. So it's, it's something we definitely have to be more vigilant and proactive with in trying to get out there so that people don't fall victim of these scams.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further discussion, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18. Vote to enter into an agreement between McClure Engineering and the town of Southbridge for the professional services related to the construction of the Animal Control Shelter project and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork as recommended by the Animal Control Shelter Building Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. I'd just like to say that I know the town manager can answer this question, but there's been a tremendous amount of money donated and funded into an account, up to $745,000 at this point. The reason why I bring that up, that if there's anybody else that would like to donate to the Animal Control Shelter, we are open arms. And I know that I've been contacted by a person that wants to donate another sum of money to it. So the, the more that they donate, the less there's an impact on any community funds. But right now, we're going into a new bid process with a new design that is more cost-efficient, cost-wise, to build it in a flat, open lot and attach it to a antiquated building that was used for another purpose. So I think moving forward, I think the building committee is, we've got a good group. We have an HVAC guy, we have a constructor supervisor, we have a plumber. We've put a lot of contractors on the committee, along with our animal control officer, the chief, town manager sits in on all of them. So it's a good mind meld of people to build a building and to build it cost-effectively and efficiently. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair? If I may, this was unanimously approved by the Animal Control Building Committee.
It was unanimously approved by the, by the committee to do this, to go forward on, on this site. Anything to add?
Just through you, this would be for the design, any testing that we have in that place down at the DPW facility. The meetings have been quite productive. We'd also like to thank the DPW director for being present as well. We did walk that area where it is being sited. And I, I think Chris McClure and the architect both agree that this is a perfect location for it and would fit the scope of the project long-term better than the prior plans, so.
I would just like to reach out and thank Rich Benoit. I left him out. Pretty hard to leave him out, but he ended up doing all the markings, all the layout where the DPW, at the DPW site. So, Rich, thank you very much. I'm sorry for leaving you out. Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19. Vote to approve FY '25 Treated Sodium Chloride Road Salt Contract with the lead salt with contracted a price of $93.70 per ton pursuant to the existing Oxford Cooperative Bid and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Counselor Shinya?
This was brought before the DPW Subcommittee unanimously approved by those present. And then just on a side note, I believe, if I recall, the DPW director said this was actually a cheaper price than last year.
It is, yes.
Yes, it is. Unanimous vote at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 20. Vote to award Project Pave 2024 Reservicing of Various Streets and Town Properties to PJ Albert Paving and Escavating of Fitchburg, Mass. in the amount of $985,249. Allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Counselor Shinya?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, it's $985,294,000. You just reversed it. And that was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
I just had a question. I was watching the video. I couldn't, I, it wasn't, I couldn't hear clearly. There was someone had a concern about the bid that was in the discussion at the meeting. I just went to someone...
Mr. Town Manager, can you rebid?
Refresh?
Oh, we rebid from the previous bid. So this was, there was no issues with this bid. It was the prior bid. That's why we went out with a more detailed scope. I think we got very good prices for what the work that we want to do, including getting the police department parking lot that's been on a capital plan for a couple of years, and a couple of other items, so we did get a very good bid price on it. And Rich, as soon as we execute this this evening, we'll be reaching out to the company to set up the meeting so that we can get this hopefully going as soon as possible. And I know in my meetings with Rich, we've talked about a host of things of, now that, now that we have this behind us, getting these bids ready for the early spring and possibly some sidewalk repairs to, in this fall and spring.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have to say I'm very excited about this. On the list, there's five smaller roads, and the, the one that is most profound is Denison Drive all the way up to the church and a little off to the sides. I just think that that part of this town has not been touched in many decades. And you have a lot of people in town living in that area, and I think a lot of trucks go up that road and into Connecticut. And I just think that this is going to be such a good thing for Southbridge. We've come a long way. The town manager and the town council have done such a good job with lots of hard work over the last 12 months. And now we finally get to start, and thank you very much to the DPW director as well. Hopefully, we can continue to put things like this together, because for under $1 million to do seven roads here and then a couple of town pieces is just phenomenal to me. And thank you to everybody involved and the council.
Any further discussion? I tip my hat to Rich Benoit. What's happening down at DPW since we've had the turnover has been productive, price conscientious. We're, we're getting more bang for our buck, and we have an experienced street guy who works on streets. He's providing a lot of the oversight with his staff. I just think our DPW has done a, an about-face when it comes to this. We're not chasing, on top of it, is a kudo to go with the, to the town manager and the finance committee, finance people, that having everything straightened out in the past year on a lot of the accounts, on what went where and chapter 7, 90 money, every day we were working on was to make it better going forward. And I think this is the first step of a positive going forward with what we're going to do this year. But that only lays out, as the town manager said, the spring bids, and then we can hit the ground running the minute the snow melts. So I think the planning and development of DPW and the financing has been fantastic, and it shows in the product. No further discussion. All those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 21. Vote to award Project Gatehouse Roof Replacement to C&amp;K Roofing of Hudson, Mass. in the amount of $85,000 to be paid using Capital Project Account 42000053000064897. Gatehouse Roof and Siding, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz.
Mr. Chair, this was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Unanimously approved at DPW. Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 22. Vote to approve a petition for repairs to a private way. Request the surface repairs of Westview Terrace up to $500 in accordance with Chapter 8, Section 8-102.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Shinya?
Mr. Chair, this was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee. And then in this discussion to the Subcommittee also was suggested that maybe the town manager can look about increasing the amount of money from 500 to maybe a little bit more. And he was going to look into that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all of them favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 23. Vote to approve $4,100 in APRA funds for the Southbridge Food Share Program. And distribution of all such funds will be overseen by the town's APRA administrator and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Discussion? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. In the grand scheme of things with the APRA funds, $4,100 isn't a lot of money. However, I can't say enough about just how large an impact $4,100, $4,100 can have for the citizens of the town of Southbridge. For, I think, 30 years plus, the food share has been at the Catholic Charities Building on Elm Street. And they're moving to, I believe, Holy Trinity Church on Hamilton Street. They need some equipment to modernize a little bit and get things up and running. And I was happy to be able to assist them in the process. But even more so, just the amount of work that they do that I was educated about is awesome. It's really a phenomenal amount of services that they provide the town, those in town that are needy, those in town that have a short-term need or a long-term need. And I just, it's amazing. $4,100 goes a long, long way. So again, as I said before, it may not be a lot of money, but in the grand So again, as I said before, it may not be a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, it's huge. So I certainly will be supporting this, and I encourage the council to support this item as well.
Any discussion by council? Commissioner.
I'm ecstatic to see this on the agenda. I agree that Food Share really helps our citizens. There's a lot of need in our community as well across central mass and across the state. I was at a Central Mass Regional Planning Commission Legislative Affairs Breakfast where the topic was food insecurity, and I think this shows our legislative leaders that our community is committed to helping our, you know, most vulnerable citizens. I do think that we should look into partnering with our state rep and state senator to see if we can, you know, bring in some more funding in this area and to our community specifically to, to help them even more. I think it's great. This is a start, but I do think that the need is much greater in our community. So thank you.
You don't further discussion by council? I see we have.
No, no, I was just coming up here to answer any questions that may come up.
Are there any questions of council? Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Can you smile, please? You look scary. Can you smile? You look scary.
Any day for you.
Any questions of the ARPA chairman? Commissioner Adams, thank you very much for your service, and keep that smile going. If no further discussion, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to... Kato? Get out of the way, let the man speak.
He's known at the senior center as Big Daddy.
Thank you, council, and thank you, guys, because I'm Carolina Alicia, I'm Vice President of the Southbridge Food Share. I've been involved with Food Share for thirty-six years. You said thirty-something years, but we've been in the same building for the past forty-two, I think. I could be mistaken, but one or two, maybe a little more. But I'd like to say thank you to every one of you for all you do for, like I said, we've been very busy. We're going to close down for the next two weeks, and then we're going to start in the middle of August in the new place. So the money is going to come in very handy. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to twenty-four, vote to approve thirty-five hundred dollars in ARPA funds for the town clerk's request for two poll pads, and distribution of such fines, funds will overseen by the town's ARPA Administrator and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to let you know, we did vote, I believe it was for three thousand, thirty-one hundred dollars, but we got the quotes from, the new updated quotes from Manny, it already went up, so we went ahead and moved this up to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Mr. Town Manager?
I don't know if you saw the updated quote, it went to forty-five hundred?
No, I didn't get that.
Yeah, she sent out an email last week. I thought you had responded, clarifying that with the invoice that it was forty-five hundred, and she may have to come back. I apologize, I thought you were aware of that, so.
Mr. Chair. Should we postpone or amend?
If you guys want to just amend it, I thought I saw thirty-five hundred dollars on here.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Daniels.
I think it's in order to, to vote to amend this to forty-five hundred dollars.
There's a motion to amend to forty-five hundred dollars, do I have a second?
Can I just get the right amount? Hold on one second, if I could. The poll pad quote that she had from tomorrow, she sent it to Joanne, so maybe you did not get it, I apologize. The quote was... Oh, did you amend it to thirty-five hundred? Okay, yeah, also, sorry, my apologies. Thought she said it was a different amount, but.
So was the thirty-five hundred the correct amount?
Yeah.
I would ask to withdraw the second and the amendment.
I withdraw the amendment.
I withdraw.
Thank you. So the main motion as read was thirty-five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-five, vote to approve twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents in ARPA funds to the town manager's request for a scissor lift, and a distribution of such funds will be overseen by the town's ARPA Administrator and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Dow, seconded by Commissioner. Discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-six, vote to approve seventy-five thousand in ARPA money, funds for the town manager's request for munish chart of accounts, conversion, and distribution of all funds will be overseen by the town's ARPA Administrator and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Dow. Discussion. Commissioner.
Just a quick question, just because we have a lot of conversations about munish. Will this help to sort of clarify some of the problems that different departments have with munish?
Joanne did a much better job than I could ever imagine at the ARPA meeting because of the fact of munish. So you have the uniform Massachusetts accounting system sets up the what numbers and how the codes would be with the numbers and all that. Yes, so it should assist, and the thing, once we build this, if we ever change to another account, the chart of accounts stays with whatever system we would go to.
Great, that was my next question. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, if you go to Vadar or something like that, it carries right over to that. But we had long discussions about munish.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-seven, vote to approve thirty-one thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the town manager's request in the town hall facility, match and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the town's ARPA Administrator and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Dow.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to thank Commissioner Daniel, because this, this came up many, many years ago about the town hall itself. So to be able to get that grant and then caveat off of the thirty-one thousand dollars from ARPA money to do the matching goes a long way, and I know there's a lot of other councillors that have been part of this, and I think it's a great idea to start studying about the town hall, especially when it's a hundred degrees in here today. But I just want to thank the councillors who've jumped on board on it as well to move this forward. Thank you. And just lastly, with the approval of all these funds, leaves about a hundred thousand dollars in the ARPA account we have until December thirty-first to make sure that we have a contract signed in place and ready to go. We want to take it all the way down to the penny. So we have another meeting on the twenty-second of August as well. We've already got a couple of people on it, our organizations, and if anybody's looking for funds or whatever it may be, they have to come to us, talk to Joanne, get the proper paperwork, and show up to the meeting. I know there was some questions recently about some other items. Until they come to me and say this is what we really want to do and go over the plan with Joanne and myself, then there's really no need to talk about it until they do their homework and proper planning. So I have, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Just for the councillors that didn't attend the ARPA, what we would do is on that, it's the Massachusetts Historic Preservation Grant, we had earmarked money out of the capital accounts for the match. What we would do is I would come back to the councillor, release that money back to the capital, use this money from ARPA to pay for the match, and then that way we would have funds available to do whatever capital repairs, small capital repairs that we would do in the town hall. It's just a timing mechanism because of the way the grant goes. And secondly, kudos to everybody involved with the ARPA, because I had conversations with several different towns. They have a lot of money in their buckets, and they have even allocated or earmarked or had to plan, and they're sitting on lots of money. So I think the town did a good job in planning this out, making sure it's accountable and doing it so we're not in a position that some towns who have a lot of money but probably won't be able to spend it because of the timing, so. Thank you all.
And lastly, just, just so you're aware, that I, point of clarification at our meeting the other day at the ARPA meeting, I talked to Joanne, I did my homework on it, the money has to be spent two years, so it's going to be December of twenty-twenty-six, it has to be spent, not July of twenty-twenty-six. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to council's forum. Commissioner Kelly.
Nothing today, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I have a few different items. Some of our school committee members have continued, are continuing their community discussions. The next set of discussions are, the first one on Thursday, August eighth, from six to eight, in the Milis Room at Jacob Edwards Library, and the second discussion will be August twenty-ninth, also in the Milis Room of Jacob Edwards Library from six to eight PM. And these are opportunities for parents and community members to come and talk to the school committee members. There are, you know, there is a new school committee member, and they are, you know, trying to reorganize a new chair, and they really want to hear from the community about their concerns, you know, the school year, new school year is starting, and certainly they want to hear from parents. They're trying to generate interest in the CPAC, the special needs group, that is a requirement under the mass general laws for the school to have a CPAC group for parents, and that's, you know, taken some time to try to generate interest. And so those are different in, you know, pieces of information that they will talk about at these community discussions, so please join our school committee members. I will try to be there to, at least one of the events, but certainly, you know, inviting community members and families to attend. A couple other back-to-school events, the summer went by really quick, and this weekend on Sunday, August eleventh, from six to eight PM on the Common, Wellstorm Inc. will have a back-to-school event. They will have haircuts, raffling off some prizes, as well as a backpack giveaway. And there is another event shortly after, rocking into the school, new school year, giveaway and concert, that is, that's part of the same event. And then RMG will be having a back-to-school family fiesta, August seventeenth, from two to four PM, eleven fifteen Sandersdale Road. And again, they will also have free haircuts, free school supplies, and a backpack giveaway. It's really important, all of these, a lot of school supplies, backpacks, lunch bags, really expensive for families, and please spread, spread the word for families to go to these events. They do it on a first-come, first-served basis. A lot of times, they just kind of run out very quickly, so getting families to these different events, really important. And last event, put together by Stiles and Max Backyard Shenanigans, a youth business expo or event on, I want to say it's Saturday, from twelve to four on the Common as well, and it's an opportunity for junior and young entrepreneurs to, you know, show their stuff and kind of get excited and learn about putting together a business, maybe future businesses for downtown area. So that is from twelve to four on the Common, and that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last couple of weeks, I've had a little thinking about what's going on in our community, and I've been talking about how to approach council with this. As we know, in our community, we have a problem with homelessness, and it's developing into potentially a severe problem as time goes on and winter coming. And I know we have to somehow address this as a community with our religious-based groups and even with our own town government. This past weekend, I was approached about this problem and made me want to bring this up tonight, and what I would ask is the general government Subcommittee or the PPP Subcommittee, have this next thing that I'm going to suggest, put on the agenda for discussion and where we could take it from here. My thoughts are, within the community, people walk by, some of the homeless people that are sleeping on the park benches, sleeping in some of the doorways of the stores, storefronts, even showing up on private property on people's hallways for a place to be home or a place to keep warm. And my thought on this is, I was watching the news, and the community had a bylaw put forward to prevent sleeping on public property. And the, the stress of this is, is not to prevent them from sitting on the park benches or things like that, but sleeping in public places such as the park benches on Main Street, anything that's public, publicly owned. And I know it sounds like a terrible thing, but we have to address it so it keeps the community feeling safe and helping the homeless population that's out there today. Just at the library the other day, when I was approached, I was at the coffee shop and I didn't believe it, and I went there, and on the park benches were two people sleeping, all bundled up, and people feared going to the library. So if we could address that, I'm not sure the appropriate Subcommittee, if it would be general government or PPP, but if we could make that part of the agenda and have a discussion, number one, if we want a bylaw of such, and number two, how we can probably start some real frank discussion about homelessness in town. Thank you.
Commissioner Dow.
I don't think I have that time, thank you.
Commissioner Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm pleased with the meeting tonight, excuse me, I'm pleased with the meeting tonight because we did some good work. We dealt with a couple of road issues, facility issues in terms of the town hall, the animal control shelter, the reservoir, gatehouse even. We took care of public needs in terms of Food Share. We took care of some public service needs, including work for Election Day for the town clerk. I'd like to point out that it does involve spending dollars. They're tax dollars, and I recognize personally that that's important to our citizenry, that they have a concern, the citizens have a concern about where this money is being spent. But I'd like to say, and this irks me, is that we're not lining our pockets. In six years on the council, there is no councillor that served with me that I know of that's ever lined their pocket over anything, and these desk jockeys on social media need to understand that we're up here trying to do our best to take care of the town. We're not lining our pockets, but facilitating our town to continue being a good place to live, to take care of what we collectively own. And that's important to recognize. I think that Southbridge really is a great place to live. We have our issues. We have new issues that are being brought up, even this evening in council's forum by a fellow councillor. And these issues do need to be addressed, and I think that we need to start someplace to address them. I may respectfully disagree with, with my fellow councillor about bylaw necessarily being written in that extent, but I think that he's right, that it does need to be an issue that needs to be looked at for our citizenry, for our collective good. If we are going to continue to be the good town that we are, we need as a collective council to continue to work to facilitate that. We also need the help of our fellow citizens that want to work forward, to look forward, to help us in that quest. We can't do it all up here by ourselves. And quite frankly, if you're going to be a negative... do it all up here by ourselves. And quite frankly, if you're going to be a negative naysayer, I'm tired of hearing it because I don't buy it. I don't believe it. When I see the work that 54 counselors, nine times six, 54, I don't even know, I'm so upset, have worked on in my time here, I've seen nothing but good involved interest. We've had our discussions, to put it mildly, on certain topics sometimes. But I've never seen anything less than a good heart and a good caring for this town. And I will continue to work for the town. And I know that my fellow councils will continue to work for this town. And I know that we will continue to care for this town and for the people that live here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well said. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's too hot. I'd like to go home. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
We don't lose our humor on the council. Counselor Montague, the vice chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple things to say tonight. I have not chose to spoke very much lately, speak very much. But I first have to say thank you to Counselor Daniel for his kind words about Southbridge and its future. He's spot-on. It really sets up what I'm about to say because can you feel it in the air, all the things changing? There's not going to be a need for all those naysayers on Facebook anymore because they're going to be seeing the great work that we've got done over these last couple of years. All the great things happening recently, especially just tonight's first meeting. We continue to hire viable talent, trustworthy fire and police officers. Of course, the new roads project, I already said, is incredible to see Dennison Drive after 40 years. I don't think it's been done since Hamer Clark first landed. The animal control shelter, a lot of great work done by many people. But I have to extend thanks to Chairman Lozo for assembling such a great committee. I'm sure having Counselor Ortiz on the board will help the HVAC design for that building. And citizen member Gil Provost joining his third board this year. He's got EHS, Board of Health, and now the Animal Control Kennel. He's got a wealth of knowledge in that field, but is also a plumbing expert. He's also our town of Southbridge Assistant Plumbing Inspector. And I'm sure that this proposal that the town manager has helped prepare is top-notch and is going to save the taxpayer loads of money in the end because of the group that you've assembled. So thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. Another thing tonight, matching the feasibility study for this particular building, this town hall, that is something that is very important to a lot of us, including many offline discussions I've had with Counselor Daniel. I know this building and its history is very important to the both of us in particular. I used to work here years ago, and I've seen even the tops of the tower. You can't go up there anymore. But if we could get some air conditioning next year, this meeting might not be so bad, Counselor Marquetti. And there's so many great things. Food share tonight, cyber grants, sprinkled with a little bit of ex officio language from our newest and very intelligent Counselor Kelly, the return of our dear friend Dave Adams to the PPP Subcommittee as its first citizen member of FY 2025. And those roads, man, I just can't get enough. We've got another school year, the receiver, the new commissioner, Johnson. They're ready to work with us. And this year, in this town, it can only get better. Blessings are in the air in this town this year. I can feel it. I know personally, this fiscal year in my life, I've been blessed with some of the best people and things that anyone could ever ask for. But the citizens of Southbridge finally have a reason to start smiling tonight with all the good things we have going on. There's a lot of unrest in the world globally today, especially today specifically. But I can honestly say, finally, here in Southbridge, we are living in a very blessed world. And people, it's time to believe in the future of our town. If you continue to believe in us, we will always put Southbridge first. We will serve you to the best of our ability, and the town of Southbridge will rise again to be the all-American city that we have always dreamed of it being yet again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 29. Discussion next meeting day. As vice chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting is Monday, August 19th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 30. Vote to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
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 Seconded by Marquetti. Motion by Dal. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present.